She said she was.
Okay, alright, well you guys now know the drill. We're just talking about photos. We're in our third third of the photos. We've done two thirds in two meetings, so I anticipate we can do the last third in this meeting. We'll see. We're gonna stick to the same protocol that worked last time, kinda worked last time, which is, we're gonna hear from the public, and then we're gonna try to do it page by page. We're gonna focus on the photos, we're gonna try to remember, hey Neil, we're gonna try to remember that we're looking at the relationship between the photo and the principle that's written down. And, when we make our comments, we're gonna try to think about, not so much is the photo good or bad, but is the house a good example? Could it be taken from a different angle? Should we throw it out altogether? Is the problem the shadows? Is the problem the angle? Is, you know, do we need to back out? Do we need to zoom in? So, something to work with. And that's the ground rules unless I've forgotten something.
Nope, that's good. Maybe perhaps the other comment that was really helpful last time is, is the picture even needed? Is what's written in the text good enough on its own? Because we don't wanna over clutter with pictures if we don't need to.
Yeah, and it's just more work.
3.5.2. Provide variety in building color. Do we wanna clarify that? A muted color or an earth tone color? We don't want yellow and pink and...
I think that comes in six.
Yeah, you asked that question of whether or not we can build color. I think later on we have talked about what color is allowed.
But it's got fit, and I think it's gonna say it's gonna be later.
But do we wanna clarify it here as well? So you don't have somebody...
Jake suggested we could reference...
But that's not color.
Reference six.
Or the next one.
Provide variety in building color along the block consistently with the guidelines.
Yeah, yeah, that's good.
Yeah.
Alright, back to the top of the hour. So we're going to start with five, the introduction to design. Design every built structure with modesty. And this is the cover intro page on page 28 of the intro photos. And this is the public, let's do public first.
Okay. Okay, design every built structure with modesty. Restrain building forms, materials, and details. And then it shows this blue thing, this box. And I was so taken back by this, after all of our work, all these months, that this would be shown as something that was acceptable. And, first of all, I have a problem with restrained building forms in that, I think of all of our historic structures, and most of them do not have restrained building forms, number one. They have a lot of detail to them. I have lists and lists of places that have, or magazines and newspapers that have talked about what it is about Carmel that's wonderful. And it talks about pictures of cottages, and European-style cottages, and historic architecture diligently preserved, secret passageways and gardens, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And to have this as a representation, I think is just egregious. And I just, I just almost cried when I saw this, because I thought, oh, we've worked so hard to try and keep Carmel's traditions and what Carmel stands for. This, you know, modern designs, you can argue plus minus, whatever, but from my perspective, they just don't fit in Carmel. And that's what we've been fighting for, for all these decades. And just to see this here, I thought, what have I been doing for all these months? Nobody's hearing? I wanna wrap people in our scroll of all the petition signatures from both residents and visitors that say, we wanna keep Carmel traditional-looking. And that's what I have to say.
Question.
You're objecting to the style.
Yeah, question. You referenced both the narrative and the photo. How would you reframe 5.1?
I think I wouldn't say it at all. I don't know, you know, what restrain means, but I don't think that's what we have or what we're aiming for.
So let's, I appreciate your question Doug, but I really think we shouldn't work on the text today. We really have to get through the photos.
Okay, well, let's look at the photos.
Yeah, and, yeah, and I think, again, when, we just, just to wrap, put this aside for a moment, the restraint is explained in the point one, point et cetera. Avoid complex roofs, things like that. All the stuff that's always been in the design guidelines, nothing has changed. So let's just, and this is, this printout is showing like a really weird overlap there. My fault, I'm sure. So can we just go around the public room on the photos on page 28?
Design every built structure with modesty, which is the introduction to this thing. We can put that 5.1 on the other page to explain the other comments if you like, or contribute some future data. But, design every structure with modesty. Anyone else have ideas for?
Yes, yeah, I believe, again, those pictures are not the best examples of what we want to show. And in general, if any picture has a green light, check mark, it needs to be example which covers all other aspects of the guidelines, right? And I know there's one thing saying face street with a single story and then step back. So here, this example shows like opposite, which is facing like two-story. I know it's simple, but it, on the other hand, it's controversial to other paragraphs of the guidelines. And as much as I like, I'm getting trouble with modern style with my clients in the city, I should say, well, it's probably, it's not the best example for this division five.
Because both of these are two-story buildings.
Two-story buildings, and they are like quite wide facing the streets, so there is no angulation which we, you know, like to see in Carmel. So maybe smaller portion on the left, taller second story on the right, or something like that. I mean, more articulated Carmel, belonging.
Anyone else have anything to add, other than what's been already said from the public?
Does anybody have something to add, did you say?
To add to this first page?
Yeah, I'd like to give you a four, from just my point of view, okay, on this photograph here, which I guess we would call, would this be half-century, mid-century modern, or would it be Bay Area modern? Or something like that, in that range. I'll repeat what I said in the last meeting, that what's happening at the planning commission meeting is, every architect who wants a modern design stands up and says...
Neil, I'm gonna, I probably shouldn't do this, but we're really, we're really trying to get through what you think about the picture. If you're gonna repeat exactly what you said at the last meeting, we all were here.
Okay, I'll just refer to the meeting itself. There was the last planning commission meeting, I hope you've all seen it. Sixty-one residents signed a document, and they said that the two, the three historic modern designs that had been presented to the commission was objectionable to many people in that neighborhood. And as a result, the planning commission shut it all down and told the architect, you gotta start over from the beginning by talking to the residents, okay? This is the design, and this is what we're gonna get, if we allow pictures like this in our design guidelines.
You like this picture or don't like this?
Don't like it.
Okay.
And you feel, does everyone on the public side feel the same way about the two-story aspect of these?
Yes.
So it should not be two-story in this photo, is what the public seems to be saying.
Yes.
Closing that and bringing it back to the group here. The architects and non-architects on our group.
Wanna start?
Nope.
Okay. Well, I do believe that it would be good to include a cottage, because we have a lot of cottages, and there's a lot of good, simple, old, original cottages, which would be good to reference, because it, I think, would underline the simple building form, rather than all the stuff that was tacked on in later years.
Something smaller is also what you're saying? Smaller than this two-story?
No, I think that if, I think it's good to have an example for a single story, and it's good to have an example for a two-story building, because we have both in town. So we might as well have both examples in here. And this, we don't have that many mission-style buildings in town. So we have a lot more cottages in town. So I think it would be good to add a photograph of a good cottage example.
Okay.
This, this is sort of Monterey, you know, Monterey Adobe style. They just put the wrong roof on it, you know, which, I don't know that that's the best example. To have an example with a barrel tile roof which doesn't belong on top of a Monterey Adobe. So I don't know if we have one Monterey Adobe in town that has a typical, you know, shingled roof, which wouldn't be what would be typical for that building. I can't remember anybody. And when it comes to the mid-century buildings, as you know, I believe that part of the Carmel history, whatever percentage, I think that that's, because there was always, there's a lot of input from the public on, you know, keep Carmel, Carmel. Well Carmel has had from way back when, modern buildings, but at a certain percentage of the cityscape. And I agree that a lot of bad new boxes shoved on top of each other does not mean, yeah, that's not what we mean by, you know, every strained good modern design. And that's one of our finest examples, is a really bad picture of a really good building.
It was a terrible photo.
Yeah. And it's a Rowan maiden, right? Is that a Rowan ma-? I always thought it was a Worcester, but I think it's a Rowan maiden, is that correct?
I don't know, it isn't.
Yeah, okay.
I can think of it by hand, I can think of it.
So...
Yeah, I mean, it's a, it's a, it's a very well-known building, obviously, and a well-known architect who is an exemplar of the style.
The detailing is really fine, so, yeah.
But, so, and Marion, so are you thinking that, again, let's, you did a nice job, you did a nice job last time of modifying the beginning of page four, which was, now is gonna be a smorgasbord of styles, the beginning of unit four. So here, do we wanna, is the plan for this page to do two photos of a single story and a, or, and find a modest two-story building maybe, so that we can show how to make a small two-story building?
Yeah, I think, I think having...
Maybe we should focus on modesty in this front page, instead of, and then put restrained stuff on another page, so that people see the context that it has to do with over-complex roofs and things like that. And this is really about the modesty and the size, maybe?
I think if you had three or four, you know, three that really showed modest cottage, modest two-story, modest contemporary with good proportions, you know, so.
We'll try it, we'll do our best, yeah.
Is it really bad? They can't hear us.
Yeah, they can't hear. The mayor's on it.
Okay.
Alright, so, I'm gonna push it a little closer. So we're talking about the generally, out of the page. Anyone else wanna add to what Marion said?
I'd like to agree with what Marion said. I think it'd be good to have a good cottage. There are so many crappy cottages in town. If we'd find a good, simple one, that would be good. And it occurred to me, this is Monterey style already. It is in Carmel, right?
This is in Carmel, but it is a Monterey Adobe style, as Marion said.
It's kinda close to ours.
Yeah, it's, and so, and what do you think, Marie?
Well, I wasn't happy with either one of them. I thought the whole page was a calling. And I think that a page with three or four examples, good examples, thoughtful, you know, carefully discovered examples, that really, that really show what we're trying to, you know, what we're trying to say here. I mean, we've discussed this so much, this concept of, you know, restrained building forms, materials, detailing, and always within a modest idea of a modest example of what we try to, you know, exemplify here. And I think these two things, I mean, are the antithesis of what we're trying to say. And I agree with Marion, but I just, I think this is just wrong to be in this, in this document.
Okay, so smaller is what I'm getting, mostly. That's the main issue, is that we should be focusing on modesty for this front page, and then we, and I apologize for the next page, there's something wrong with the image.
And then it's, and then the concept of restrained building forms, materials, detailing, I mean, all within the context of modesty.
Right, okay, so, and, and, you know, I will just point out for just a moment, that this building that's on the bottom, which is a very well-regarded example of mid-century modern architecture, is actually not as big as it looks.
It's just, it's a really bad picture.
It is actually a very modest building.
If you look at it in context, there's stuff on either side.
There's stuff on either side, it's not...
Yeah, but the people using this document are not gonna know that.
Right.
Yeah, that's why...
And we won't have given a mature round town.
Right, I hear you. No, I'm not disputing the comments at all, I just wanna point that out, just for our own education, that this is actually a very small building. We would be lucky to have people building at this scale, because the stuff they're building now is just way bigger than this. This is actually a small building. It looks large, just because of the way it's designed, which is weird, in a way, for what we're after. Okay, next page. So again, think of the 5.1 restrained building forms, materials, and details as an introduction to all these, you know, follow-up principles that are underneath 5.1. And I apologize, I don't know why this enormous Pasadena, green and green, sorry, what's his name?
Yeah, green and green.
But it's the one, it's the one guy, Charles.
Charles Sundner.
Charles.
I don't know why it's gotten out of proportion, and we can't read the text, and I don't know what's under there.
I don't either.
Okay, so if you have a computer, oh no, you still wouldn't know, okay.
No, this is what you sent.
My apologies. So we cannot evaluate whatever's underneath that.
So let's get feedback on the pictures we do have from the public.
There's only, you're only missing probably two or three elements there. And you can imagine what the one under, above 5.1.3 is. It's going to be a picture of the roofs in a more simple, less cluttered diagram. That's what's above the X-out 5.1.3, so you know.
It's another red X, in other words.
No, it's a green check.
Oh, it's a green check.
If I do it right.
Oh, it's a good one, okay.
Yeah, it's an original one. Alright, sorry everyone, so go to 5.1.3, the two X-out things, let's see what the fellow thinks about those. I know you're gonna love this building, Carol, if I'm right. So 5.1.3.
Yeah, yeah, well luckily it has an X on it. And also...
Does this help you guys? Here's an older version.
I agree with all of this, except 5.1.4X. I think I would remove that, because I don't think that's a good example of too much.
Yeah.
And we have to have the rest of the building that goes with it, it's not old. There's this whole unit over here, that's the one I'm thinking of, that's on Carmelo. And it's, it's just exactly, I can hear Doug, I mean, and some of the things he said early on, about, you know, not cluttering, you know, too many roof forms and yada, yada. This thing is the example, it's the antithesis of what we want.
Well then, we should show either the whole thing or not at all.
Well, I think, so just as a, as a part of the exercise, as a reminder of last time, so look at, Carol, you're making a comment on the red X for 5.1.4.
Right.
Go read that text. It says, do not use building elements, so it's not talking about an entire building. Building elements that are complex monumental form out of scale, or that increase the visual prominence of the building. And I think what this picture is meant to represent is, you've got two columns, a stone, a stone pillar holding up columns, you've got, you know, all these elements on the roof, arched, you know, side lights alongside the doorway. This is a monumental, complex entryway, and there's a red X over it showing that that's not what is, that's not a good example of 5.1.4.
Can I remind everybody of the format? Not engaged.
The public, right, the public comments.
See, they're both 5.1.4, with both red Xs. So which one is the worst one?
Yeah, hey, let's do, let's do a quick time, I think... I think Marion's right. Quick timeout for everybody. So just a reminder of the format. We're asking the public to read ahead on the page that we're gonna be on next. Please look at the pictures with the numbers, 5.1.3, and which guideline they represent on the left. And we're just looking for feedback on if the picture is a good representation of the guideline. Yes or no is great, and if you have guidance of what would be a better representation, that would be wonderful too. We'll take those comments from the public, and then we'll turn the mic, and we'll just hear from the steering committee, the steering committee and myself included. We will, we will not speak and not comment on what we hear from the public, and we'll address that when we bring it back to us. So that'll help with the timing, I think.
Yeah, well said. And Carol, just, everybody, could you, Neil was kind enough to bring the prior version, just look, you will now see the photo that's underneath, and we'll have to borrow Neil's in a second. So again, look at the whole page, comments on the page while Carol's doing that. Any other comments on the page from the public?
What is the evaluation of the top picture? Cause it doesn't have an X or a check that I can see.
It's a mistake, the picture is supposed to be smaller.
Okay.
And does it represent a check or an X? An okay.
An okay.
So you guys, let's start at the bottom, let's start at the bottom, public, while these guys pass it around. So anything on the page, if you have any comments on 5.1.4? There are four pictures that have to do with 5.1.4. Do not use building elements that are complex monumental formal, et cetera. So you have, for example, at the bottom, there are very subtle differences in a way. One that has a conical tower on the right, one that has a modest, much more modest slip roof on the left of an entry. That's the kinda thing we're trying to contrast.
On 5.1.4, I do tend to agree, the one with the red X is, tends to be monumental. The 5.1.4 above it, I think that that's a reasonable expression of a traditional design. I don't wanna get to the place, there is a trend in modern, thinking that detail is always bad. I do not agree, and I think that's a good expression of a traditional design. The top, the green and greenhouse, love it. I think it's great for that location. 5.1.3 with the red X, yes, and that's it.
Anyone else on the public on this page? And Carol, and whoever will share Neil's nice rupture copy, in case you have any thoughts about the top of the page. And then you'll be kinda like to share it with us again.
Can you guys, do you mind, Neil?
Can you slide that?
Yeah, thank you. Sorry, it's my fault. Okay, so we did have a worse green and green picture, that's why that one was floating there, to be replaced probably. Then there's a cottage with a check mark, it's hard to see it in black and white, very modest cottage, L-shaped roof, similar to this L-shaped plan here. This is complex, this is obviously complex. And then the rest are, you look at your own sheet for that.
Oh, our favorite one here.
Yeah.
This one.
Yeah, I know.
Why is that eliminated?
I don't know.
Marion?
Yeah, we all love that.
Oh yeah, we should have that one.
Well, that one should be somewhere, I can't part with that one.
I mean, I can't believe it. But you didn't comment on that. Oh.
So, so let's talk...
Or you.
We haven't yet. We're just starting.
You're getting there.
So what do you guys think about the top of the page, and the sort of things that are next to the two diagrams? Looking at what's there, cause I'm pretty sure that's the same photo, again, apologies. So a simple cottage, and then a very complex crazy thing below it. We could reserve that crazy horrible thing for another photo, for another place. Or we could, and find, I don't know, find something really complex, that's more traditional, that's really egregious, or we can use this one.
I think they should both have an X, but that one X has nothing to do with the other X. So the photo does not represent what's in the drawing at all at 5.1.3. So I couldn't, the right one should have a double X, but...
Yes, absolutely.
But I, but it doesn't, it doesn't represent in a photograph the jumbled-up roof thing that we show on the left.
Well, it doesn't, but it does potentially represent the words. So it says, avoid visual complexity, busy building forms, too many different materials, excessive or overly ornate, ostentatious, details that contrast strongly within a single building.
Then maybe you just do the photograph. I think it's confusing doing it, then you don't need the diagram, it's just confusing.
Or, you know what it is, maybe, maybe the diagram is supposed to be 5.1.2. Maybe that's the problem. Like, it needs to refer to keep the primary building volumes. And 5.1.3, we don't have a diagram for, as you said. But it's, you're right, it's about the other topic, right? It's about the topic above.
Yeah.
Okay.
Crazy, yeah.
And what do you think about this one that's in Neil's black and white? The one that's to the right upper, above the crazy awful one? This, this simple?
Yeah.
That one's good?
Yeah.
Okay, that one's good? Putting a check underneath? And green and green we like, even though that photo wasn't properly...
Yeah.
And then let's go to this 5.1.4 issue. I actually really did kind of like the bottom example, because it was so subtle. You're okay with that? So one has this conical, you know, entry dome thing, and the other is the same shaped door, but just modestly placed on the wall with a roof overhang. I think that makes the point nicely. That was one of the few, that was really thought, okay, that works.
Yeah.
But this above, let's talk about the, what Brandon said. I personally don't disagree that this might be the right amount of detail for this style, you know, in, not Antucket, but maybe like somewhere Connecticut or something. But in terms of the scale, and whether it's overly complex monumental formal out of scale, or increases the visual prominence, and you are thinking the whole building is egregious.
Yes.
But the question is, you know, how does the rest of the steering committee feel?
The whole building is like this, only worse.
Yeah, but does this, and I'm telling you...
And it's got a monumental, it's got a monumental fence in front of it.
It does, it does. And we could show the whole building, and that would be fine. The only reason I cropped it for this discussion was because we hadn't yet quite resolved how much we were willing to put in. Doug very boldly at that last meeting said, put it all in. I don't care if it's from Carmel by the Sea, and it's a neighbor, but this is harder to identify. Only someone like you knows exactly where this is. So that's, this is the ethical question for you all. Are you willing to show the whole building?
The people are never there. I've seen them there once.
Okay, that's an even greater detail.
I don't think you need to worry. Don't need to worry, they're mystery people.
These people won't be offended.
These particular people. So this is a question, is this enough of a photo? Is it the right amount of monument? I mean, it's, I think it's useful to do something to perhaps contrast with what Neil said, that actually is traditional, but is not modest in its traditionalness.
Well, let me ask the steering committee this. I mean, do you feel like 5.1.4 needs two yes and no representations? Or is the second one at the bottom good enough to just get rid of this other one? Why do we need to show it twice?
Yeah, the bottom one is so good.
And clutter the page.
What do you guys think?
To get, to get this imitated tower.
Get rid of these two?
No, have these two...
Get rid of this set, and just keep this set? Cause they both are representing 5.1.4, so why do we need to show it twice?
It's just two different styles. So what do you guys think? I totally don't care. What is, you want two different style examples, or do you wanna just use the one that works super well?
So you're saying, scratch out the middle band?
Yeah, the middle band.
I agree with that.
What do you think, Marion?
Yeah, I think that's fine, because I think it's too subtle, because on the first sight, that blue and white one cropped isn't that bad. It's just when you look, and the rafter just misses the post.
So that's a suggestion, Brandon? And let's move to the next page, which I'm sure everyone on the left has...
Red ahead, the next one? Here, just nod your head.
We have.
Maybe Sherry will go first. Sherry, you were nodding your head.
Any thoughts on this page, public numbers?
No, I think it, I think all the examples are good pictorial examples, and the wording is pretty clear on each of the 5-point items. And I'm especially glad this is a red X, because that really is, bothers your eyes to look at. And thank you for putting my most hated house in the top page here, as a red X.
If we're gonna agree on one thing in this committee, it's very good. So what, okay, 5.1.5, anything from the gentleman on the left?
Yes, the first three pictures at the top, two crosses. I can disagree, disagree... I can disagree, disagree with the red crosses. I don't see a big mistakes there, so unless there is a-
Are you reading the text?
I'm looking at the pictures 5.1.5.
Yes.
Cross, and the next one, also cross, red cross. To me, again, maybe it's my personal opinion, but I don't see a big, big mistake in the-
Where are you reading the text, so that you can see what we're trying to illustrate?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. And do you have any thoughts?
Yeah, on the two red Xs upper left, the one on the far left, I'm not sure is a really good example, because we're offsetting a small room offset in a larger room, which could be very effective in a living room, it could be very effective with the interior space. 5.1.5 I do like. I think it is a fairly good example. These mixing of X2 and M10 is, it gets really bizarre in Carmel. So I do like that. And 5.1.5 with the green X, I like.
Very good. Okay, we're going to bring it back to-
Wait, wait. I, I think the very first on the left, I don't like that as an example. I don't think it's clear enough. The rest of them I all agree with.
Okay, wow, that's a great for us. Okay, back to the steering committee, thoughts on any of them?
I think the one on the far left is far too subtle in tones for somebody to really get the picture. No pun intended, but anyway, one of the biggest problems we have in town, I think, are all these houses being built with a smattering of stone here, and a smattering of stone, and nothing is integrated.
You're right.
Materials are not integrated. And either you build a house with stone, or you build it with some other material. But don't try to fancy it up, or make it, you know, look more expensive by just plopping stone. I mean, we said this years and years ago, that we did not want that in this town.
And the middle one, we think, and contrast of the middle and the right make that clear.
Yeah, I think we just ignore this first one, just strike it out.
Okay, so tell me what the rest of you feel. I agree, just by way of introduction, that this one is more subtle on the left, and I will say there's a question mark in my mind still as to whether that's a bad thing. In other words, we're trying to actually push people to eliminate all bad examples, not just really bad examples. So that's why I have, that left one is there for your consideration. So tell me the three of you across. Dawn?
The picture reflects the second sentence of 5.1.5. Do not use small purposeless offsets. It demonstrates that. It does not reflect the first sentence about avoiding tree limbs or expressing a change of occupational use.
True. Only for, well, then we would need a green check to show a clear purpose of avoiding trees. Yes, so then we would need to add an image to that. Any other thoughts on the two options?
I agree with what's been said so far, so let's strike that one.
I think the two photos, two red photos.
All right, what do you guys think about finding a photo that does not mix up the material problem, and just focuses on the offset problem? Tell me what we could do to 5.1.5 on the left to make it a better example of that, because this is what I see all over town, is people going, "I don't know how to design this building, so I'm just going to do like this accordion effect of, or like one of those collapsing cups, where things get smaller and smaller toward the street," but there's nothing, it's just BS. It's not a real, it's not real design.
Exactly.
It's just decoration. And so it looks fake, like this one. Now, maybe this isn't the best example. What could make this a better example on the left, that when people are not turned on by this one?
I think because it also has the material change, that's why you get, have to read the paragraph twice, because the material composition isn't bad on the left side, right? It's plaster and stone, it's well done, has nice color for the windows, so good roof with it. So that's all good. And there's plenty of examples where both is bad, so.
Well, again, this is a general question to you guys, it doesn't only just apply to this page. When something is, we're trying to prevent a particular mistake.
But this is also not a small and purposeless offset. It looks it is a room in there, or a staircase or something.
Okay, so let's find a smaller offset. Maybe that would do it, a smaller offset.
Can you report to the public?
On this particular one?
Yes. On the second, on the next page, there is an example, second from the bottom, 5.3.2. Why don't we move this picture to, because, and actually, the paragraphs 5.1.5 and 5.3.2, there are little redundancy.
Change up the language.
Right, but that picture might belong to the top left corner on the previous page.
Okay.
And that is a better example of the offset, which is, you know.
Thank you for bugging in. I appreciate it. Let's bring it back.
Yeah. So, so I think that the point is that maybe this 5.1.5 paragraph is trying to do too much. If we're addressing it again in 5.3.2, maybe we need to remove that same language from 5.1.5, and that enables us to remove that top photo on the left, and focus the comment onto the other 5.3.2. That's an option. What do you think, Brandon?
Yeah, it's an option. I think, I think we should kind of put a pin in that one and come back when we talk about language again.
Okay.
Because I think we've made it clear, like, we're only talking about pictures.
Yeah, I know. Variation in building planes, though, might make more sense in 5.3.2. I'm going to note that as a possibility. That would solve our issue, because we'll see what, okay, we're taking it back to the public unless there are other comments on page 30. We're going to page 31, which I know the public has worked a head on.
So comments on page 31?
There are no pictures for 5.2.2, 5.3.1, 5.3.4, 5.3.6. So do we need pictures, or not?
And will we, give us your opinion, do you think that those languages need pictures or not?
Well, the detached, one-story, one-car garage, small in scale, that probably is okay without a picture. Historic Carmel styles, I mean, it might be nice to have an example of what people consider historic. It's pretty wordy.
Any other comments?
Yeah, 5.3.3 and 5.3.4, the bottom right example, emphasize the low and horizontal so the buildings appear to hug the ground. Where did we get that one? We have all, you know, high pitched roofs that we like, we have divided windows that we like that aren't too large. All of that is, is not represented in 5.3.3. That's exactly the opposite of what we've been talking about.
There's been controversy about that 5.3.3 the whole time. That is a pull over from the earlier draft, not the early draft, the earlier design guidelines that we will discuss after. Let's see with the photos. Any other comments on the photos on the left here?
Yeah, 5.3.3, I agree. It's a solid wall of glass, by the way. I don't think it's very typical of traditional Carmel, but 5.2 and 5.2.1 I like, and I think 5.2.1, red X and green check I like, and 5.3.2, green X I like. And I take your comments on 5.3.2, and that's about it.
Any other thoughts from the public? We're going to bring it back to the committee, okay?
Comments in general on this page, everybody?
5.2.1 with the red X in the upper right-hand corner is on Carmel Point.
Which originally, we had said that was nice of us to do that. We did find stuff that is outside, and we never have to talk to anyone about it. But, you know, we can change that policy. We can-
I thought, last meeting we did.
The picture's having changed since then.
But, yeah, I mean, I do think the question, we still have this question hanging over us, is it fair to, what do we want to do about the sphere of influence? Do we want to take good examples from the sphere of influence? Do we want to take bad examples from the sphere of influence? Do we never want to take anything outside of our sphere? Do we always want to take everything from within the square mile? This was raised most recently last, last meeting, but we never really, I think we had a policy before these photos were brought up, which is we would try not to identify or incriminate the bad, the bad stuff.
In town.
In town.
That's right. That was the standing policy.
When we had the workshops, and the consultant was here, his workshops at Sunset Center, there was great negative commentary about the photos that he showed that were from other places.
That's true.
These are the city of Carmel by the Sea guidelines, and I think the photos ought to represent Carmel by the Sea.
Even if they're bad, we'll check whether they really live there. And then what do you guys think, the three other of you, about just, you know, putting very identifiable red Xs on, within the square mile? Do we, do we want to do that on purpose, or like Doug is suggesting, or do we just want to do it if we have to? Or what is the policy?
Why would we restrain ourselves to the sphere of influence? If you want a bad example, go to Monterey, or go to Cathedral City, or Eureka.
I don't believe, I don't believe, Doug, I don't think we need to go outside, and I don't think we should go outside. I mean, this is a Carmel by the Sea document. It's not-
A Carmel by the Sea and sphere of influence document.
Even the negative stuff. Okay, you two, you guys agree with that?
Still have some minority so far.
Yeah, I think if it's a building within town, it has to be egregiously bad to get the red X. We shouldn't be too casual with it.
And then what happens if we want to put a very egregious building? Do we have, are you okay with it being in town also? I mean, not so egregious, half egregious. Are you okay for it to be in town with a red X on it?
Yes.
You're okay. Marian?
Yeah, I moved out of town, so I'm fine now.
Right, the majority rules.
Be doing that policy. Okay, so I'm going to, my note for 5.2.1 is we're going to try to find the same thing, but within town.
This one isn't?
It's just outside.
And this is not, this is something that wouldn't even be possible in three stories in Carmel, so it's really-
Oh, we have, oh, we have it.
We have them.
Oh, we have it.
But these are design guidelines for new buildings, and a new building would not be three-story like that, right?
Right.
So it's not, it's, it's supposed to be a document for people who are planning-
True, no, that's a good point. So you're saying we shouldn't be too, these folks shouldn't be too insulted if they already got a building that is no longer permissible going forward.
No longer, no, well, it's not even useful to the, to the builder, because it's not, it wouldn't be even possible. So what we should find is a building that would be possible, so it can aid somebody who designs, but is egregious.
So for, so for staff, for me, and so, because we're going to, after this exercise, we're putting it all back together, I just want to confirm so we have it clear. The, the policy moving forward is going to be good pictures, bad pictures. Every picture is from some building here within the incorporated limits of Carmel by the Sea. Doug?
Yes.
Marian?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Melanie? Victoria?
And I'm, I'm going with the majority.
Okay. Very slippery of you.
I'm just the facilitator.
I like it. Okay, good. Thank you.
That's a calm.
As a substitute for 5.2.1.
Yes.
The house in Wind and Surf or Wind and Sea at the end of Fourth at San Antonio would be a perfect fit here.
Mm-hmm, good choice.
Yeah. Glad to have both photographed this memory.
I think it's San and Sea.
San and Sea, yeah.
Perfect picture.
Wow, one of the most complicated pieces of language that we have in town. So many weird things with that piece property.
Okay, what about the rest of this page, guys?
So there, we may be identifying a, and remember, when we went through all the text without any photos, we tried to change as little as possible about the content of the prior guideline. We really did. We made a few conceptual changes, very few, and we made organizational changes. This is something that has always been there, the 5.3.3 hanging over us, because I think most of the committee agreed, but please correct me if my memory doesn't serve, that emphasizing low or not low is really never been the point. This might have been something that related to, I mean, low in terms of small, but you could have vertical roof pitches, you could have horizontal roof pitches. Nobody was trying to prefer, at least in our group, if I recall, forcing people into a particular roof pitch. But that's what 5.3.3 does. It says you want to have a horizontality to the building, which of course, like Frank Lloyd Wright has it, it's gorgeous. But it's not something we are telling people they must do. That is what I thought, but we left it there because it was old and we didn't settle the matter. So the question, even though we're on photos, I just want to throw that out there.
We shouldn't get into the language, because we're going to have to do it for the rest of this meeting if we do it. Let's just put a pin in it and come back to it. That would be my suggestion.
But it might emphasize, it might-
I know.
Just tell us what you want to do about-
If the language goes away, then the picture goes away.
Exactly, that's what I'm saying. So tell us about the pictures, everybody on the steering committee, in the general of this page. How you guys feel about the last picture on the left, for example?
Oh.
That's a pretty good one.
Good, bad example.
In a good way, right?
Yes.
Okay, good and bad in a good way? In Carmel by the Sea?
Yes.
Yeah, oh, it is.
So there we, we like that one. Anything else? We discussed the one on the upper right. Anything else here? And 5.3.2 is a good example, people think, of this bad offset thing? These little offset dumb, is this one here?
Oh, yeah.
Realistic modules that reflect real functioning spaces within, not just minor offsets meant to create interest.
That's a horrible property.
It's a good example of a horrible thing.
Good example, bad, yes. Good for being so bad.
Yeah.
Okay, so we like that. It may end up being, fixing the problem on the other page. So we're going to say C 5.1.5.
Okay, public?
Page 32? I would, I like everything except 5.4.3 and 5.4.4 on the left-hand side, the drawings. Can we replace that with something like that? Building across from Cypress Inn that is so ornate, the big gray looking like a three-story building.
With a circle window.
Yes, with the circle window. That's a perfect example of what not to do.
Near La Playa?
It's a good example.
Across from La Playa.
It is my favorite.
Across the street, yeah.
So that would be a four-point, it would be a 5.4.3 photo, is that what you're saying?
Yes, let's see, traditional, yeah. And even 5.3, or 5.4.3, let's see, four, keep visible openings subordinate in scale to the building. No, that's not the same.
Keep it with 5.4.3.
So I believe the focus, they were going to maybe add that terrible example from across from La Playa as a good out-of-scale element. Okay, anyone else from the public on this page?
Yes.
Yes.
I like all the photos and diagrams. They all matches text very nicely, but I see one controversial in a couple of paragraphs, which is 5.5. Keep the overall color scheme muted, and we have a picture on the right. Right, and the next one, five point five.
What did you say again, which we're talking about?
Five point five, right? It's keep the overall color scheme muted to blend with the forest palette in the picture on the right, which is a good picture for this sentence. But the next one says, limit the use of bright colors such as an entry door. And the entry door on this picture is red.
Yeah.
So actually, I have no problem with colored doors if they're not in the scheme of the.
It is encouraging colored doors.
Yeah.
If any, to keep, limit the use of bright colors, if any, to key accent features such as entry door. I believe it says limit to.
The door, in other words, put it on the door.
Okay, sorry, sorry. Okay.
Anyone else on this page?
Mine have been covered, I'm done.
Good.
I, I thought you'd appreciate that. I, I want to give back a little. Sorry. I get emotional.
All right. Anything on this page, guys? Or everyone loves it?
Yes, five point four point five, is that in Carmel?
Oh, yes.
Yes.
It's on the beach, sadly.
Yeah. And, and this five.
Can you believe that's in Carmel? That's just scary.
It's just, that is so disgusting.
Which one's disgusting? Yes, I know. I'm with you. I worked hard on getting.
Good picture. The comment is good picture.
Good and it's bad.
Okay.
Any other things? Everybody likes everything else?
Yes, I want to say something.
Yes, please.
About five point four point three.
Yes.
I mean, that, you guys, to me, looks like an office building in Monterey.
Which one? This diagram here?
This one here.
This one, oh, oh, the checkmark, well, that's, that's a.
You know, I don't, I don't think that's particularly, I mean, the, the roof line plus the, the glass windows. I mean, it just, it reminds me of a couple of new houses down on Serra Way. They would be fine over in Monterey. And of course, that's not Carmel, it's County, these two new houses. But just even having something like this just is not, I don't know, maybe I'm just all wet, but I just think it's, I think it's, you know.
Look at the text here. This is, says, don't use oversized building elements like windows, doors, entries, and chimneys. And so this is showing a really tucked away set of divided light windows that are right under the roof line, very small. The entry door is very modest, and that's meant to contrast with the other two diagrams that are the opposite. So it's, you're, I think you're picking up on the style thing, but you gotta look at the text.
Yeah.
But tell me what the rest of the steering committee thinks about this page also.
Doug?
Would you rather have a photo?
Yeah. Yeah, I, I just find this thing terrible.
Anyone else on this page?
Yeah, I don't like the mix of graphics and photos. I think we should either do graphics or do photos.
On this page or in general?
I think in general. And I think once, when you go get to formatting, it'll be important, I think, to have these Xs and checks next to each other. It's, I mean, it takes otherwise a while to get this organized. You know, I mean, this five point four point five, I think, is, are excellent examples of the point that, that we're trying to make. And so I think it wouldn't be too difficult to find photos instead of the graphics. I think it would, it's much easier that way and not have to go back and forth in our minds.
Could I, could I offer a suggestion on that? I think maybe, I would ask if someone will ultimately reuse this. Maybe we just give direction to limit graphics, because I'm going back through, there's things like this.
No, no, and I, yes, absolutely. They are very important, yes. I, I agree. Yeah, yeah, you can, no, you can't, yeah.
If you go back to this type of like massing, I mean, that, maybe you're saying just when it comes to something that's like architectural, we take the diagram out.
Okay, that's, that's good. Architectural elements should be pictures of the real element, not diagrams of an architectural element.
So we limit the diagrams to things that cannot be shown photographically? Is that what we're talking about? Okay.
Yeah.
And on the O L muted palette, I, I, I like this house. It's nice, but it does have white trim, and I don't know that that's what you want in coverage necessarily.
I know, I don't love the white trim, but it is kind of an off-white, which I know this community kind of likes. But what do we think about the lower right, the rest of the gang here? Okay? Doug's okay with it? Don, lower right? This one has a little bit of this off-white trim, which.
Oh, yeah, that's okay.
We're okay with that? Okay, we're, we're letting that pass. Okay. Well, we're done with that section.
Okay, I'll start, as usual. I, I love the first one, of course, and as you might expect, I don't love number, the second one on the right. And especially the following page says, convey a sense of true craftsmanship in architectural detail.
That's what it says on this page.
Well, it doesn't say anything. I mean, this is just a title. I don't know why we have pictures here, actually.
Our trend was to never to find a cup, a few, a few ideas to introduce the whole concept of the unit. So the unit here is best detailed.
So what is authentic and consistent about either of these? I don't know. I think it's hard to figure out what's going on here.
Okay, anyone else?
I, I would like to see a red X, not two green checks. So you see.
Find an example that have a red, a red X.
That would fit on here, so you don't just have two greens. And I, I do, I agree with Carol, I do not like the one on the right. I think it's offensive.
I'm sorry, did you want to go? Yeah, the, the question is detail. Detail every property authentically and consistently. Well, the photograph on the right is, let's not do any detail. So it doesn't relate to the, to the statement. Photograph on the left is great, and we see the handwork, we see the woodwork, the, you know, authentic. You, you feel it's for real, that somebody actually built this, lives in it, and so on. The one on the right, not, not quite so authentic. Looks like a bit of a performance and has very little detail. So I don't think it's a good choice for a photograph.
Okay, back to the steering committee?
Notice the landscaping, please.
All right.
On both of them. One is very Carmel, and one has all of these, you know, Southern California desert plains.
Oh, and there's invasive species on the left also.
Yes, 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 yes.
All right, so thoughts on these two? Thoughts on finding a red X? I think in general, we haven't done too many noes for the introductory page. We've been more like, this is a representation of what we want to see. That, I don't think there's any title pages where we've had noes. I can double-check that. So that would be a, a change in directions. But what do you guys think about, and, and, you know, this is a comment for everybody, not just for the steering committee, who knows? But detailing is a verb in this case. It is not meant to say add, it doesn't say add detail. It just says when you detail a property.
Why don't we say detailing every property authentically?
Right, so it's, it's clearly the verb in the sentence. And what I'm trying to say is that when you detail a building, you determine how it fits together. How different materials touch other materials, and in what way? Are they a straight butt? Are they a chamfer? These are how you detail a building. It doesn't mean how much detail is there. So I'm just throwing that out for, for the whole group here. So what do you guys think about how these two examples convey authenticity of, inconsistency of how the buildings are detailed?
I find the one on the left overwrought. It may be good in principle, but it's too much.
Any other thoughts from the?
I think we can find a better example. The Henry Hill House is certainly consistent.
That's Don's thoughts. Doug and Mary Ann? Melanie? Okay.
And I think the one on the left details a little Carmel.
Yeah, on the left, it, it, it has one of the features that we actually just said in early on, that, that, that offset, that it, the offset it has there, that is not actually what we.
But that's a painting, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, but it's, I don't know. But it's definitely has beautiful, beautiful detailing. I, I think it's sort of supposed to be Normandy style, but it not really isn't, so it's kind of a fake thing. But you may, you may find better, older ones than that, but the craftsmanship is really beautiful, you know? And on the, on the Henry Hill, it's generally, I think, a good photo. I will send you an option where both the detailing and the detail is very, it might be underscore the point a little better. And it's also a good professional photograph, so you might.
Of this one?
Of this one, yeah. It's actually the one next door where I have a professional photograph that might underscore the point a little better.
So we're just gonna try to do better, but in principle, there's a, a sense that having these two ways of detailing a building is worth showing.
I like the comma page idea.
Okay, six one three, the red X on six one three. Do not use materials or details inauthentic to the architecture or that appear nonstructural, gratuitous, or applied as superficial elements, wall accents, or veneers. Are we talking about the flower box? Are we talking about the wood beams? The Tudor-ish wood beams? What are we talking about there?
Give us your comment on the photo.
Okay, I think it's fine. I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say it's a bad thing. We have these fake Tudor beams everywhere in Carmel. I've been looking around, and without them, it's a pretty plain white wall. It's a pretty plain white wall. And then on six one four, the red X on the right. On multi-painted windows and doors, use true dividers that go from inside to outside. Oh, those are fake. I get it, okay. I couldn't tell from the picture. Okay, never mind on that one, that's fine. And the rest I like.
Thank you, Carol.
Yeah, I agree, six point one point three with red cross, which is like fuckwork. It's not a good probable example, because it's hard to tell what's wrong there from that picture. It's a small header, or is that fake fuckwork beams? So maybe, maybe it needs to be a better example. It's.
Well, now that you all have released me from zooming in on things, that's another issue that might help clarify, right? You're not embarrassed about using Carmel examples. Some of these are too closely cropped. So you're going, sorry to interrupt. Anyone else?
Yeah, just a thought on six point, one point three red X. In, in a way, it's a good example. It, it shows somebody trying to do the Tudor, you know, half-timber style, but they clearly look paste-on. And that's kind of what we're trying to avoid, is this, that's non-authentic to me. So in a way, but I understand everybody else's comments, I just wanted to add that.
All right, we're gonna back to the steering committee.
Thoughts in general on this page?
We have five architects in the room, and I would like their opinion as to whether six one one is accurately conveyed in the photograph in the upper right corner. Architectural detail.
Thoughts, Don and Mary Ann, about six point one point one in the upper right? Is that conveying a sense of true craftsmanship in architectural details?
No.
That's a no.
Thank you.
Now, I remember last.
He said architectural detail, I thought the architect.
Remember last meeting, Mary Ann, you, I think correctly pointed out that we need to find examples of buildings that are.
Somewhat new, that are trying to be historic and respectful of history, but, and are acceptable, in other words, they don't look fake. So this perhaps was the thought behind this? I don't, again, no ego, no authorship, but I don't know, maybe it's just not good enough?
No, that's a really bad.
Okay.
But the left one does the job, so we don't need to.
Okay.
The left one is, is a gorgeous piece of property.
So we, so, okay.
It's not historic.
So you're saying don't illustrate six point one point one because, we don't have to illustrate six point one point one because it's taken care of both by the photo and six point one? Is that right?
I think so.
And Don, what do you think?
Well, I agree with all of the comments.
Okay. So we're gonna start taking that out, yeah.
I want to offer a suggestion as I was listening to everybody. One thing I think that I, I would, would be helpful for me and my staff and probably people reading this is, once we get through the pictures, we get them back in, we all agree, like, six point one point three, the red X, the bad example of the applied timbers. I think if we just captioned some of these pictures, because we're gonna clear up the spacing a little bit, we just, below says, "Applied timbers." And then you know what you're supposed to be looking at, and, yeah.
They're the same, basically.
Yeah, so don't leave people guessing. All right, I'm done for the day, thank you.
Mary Ann, also, with the timbers, the timbers cannot be just so unstraight. That's not what they were. They were cut down from trees that are all jagged, and they have texture, you know?
Not necessarily. Actually, the finer buildings, when you go to the Normandy, they're nice and straight.
Because they had the money. Yeah. But are, so the steering committee, I'm looking to you, because you're ultimately guiding the ship. Are you guys okay with that concept of putting some captions underneath? Okay.
Sure. Any other thoughts on these photos going down the page?
Yeah, that check, six point one point three.
That's a very bad picture. You see the starburst pattern of timbers going off only on the one side, because on the other side, they have a light next to the door. That's certainly nothing structural. Or, or the weird one above the window, I mean, it couldn't be more fake, so.
You're talking about the eyebrow?
No, 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 no. That you have here, you have a, you, here you have one that would never be there in a real timber building. And then you got the starburst one just going off the side of the door. That, what's that? You know, that's nothing.
Show me what you're talking about.
Here, here, here. You got it here, starburst, then have one here in the middle of the, on top of the thing, you know?
Oh, yeah.
I know there are many good, I know there are many good half-timbered buildings in town, so.
So, yeah, I think.
And also that tower thing up there is so bad in the, in the valley. So let's just put, let's just find a good half-timbered building.
And again, always open to suggestions of where to find these things, because this, as we rest know, is a collection of photos that's on the computer, so.
That, that has been sort of screwed up by the entry that was permitted. But there's the oldest house, I think it was, in Carmel. It, it's on Torres Street between Ninth and Tenth on the west side. It used to be in a beautiful green color, and they did the black and white thing on it, but it is a very authentically, mm-hmm, authentic. It's a very good half-timbered example. And a simple building form, except for that entry, so maybe we could, I don't know, something, yeah. Something, it had a beautiful little wood porch.
Six one six right up there in the left corner. I don't find that particularly attractive. True structural elements such as natural wood exposed rafter tails, and if you can't, if you don't have enough money to do it right, then do it simple. I don't, that's simple, all right. I, I just don't think that's an attractive style to promote as a, as a positive. I agree with all the other Xs and others, except six one eight? What in the world is that? Eight, the green on the, on the right.
The bottom right?
No, the one up from the bottom, that little thing there. I would eliminate that, I don't know what it is. And then one more. Six one ten on the left, concrete poured, concrete, really? I don't think that's something we should be promoting.
I think that's, I think that's.
Oh, good.
Yeah. Yeah, I know that house. I think if you also the house. It looks exactly like one.
You're just having great pictures, but let's, let's let the topic finish there.
Yeah, I agree with all the comments, but the last one, six one point, point one point ten about concrete, it's about detail new and manufactured materials, right? So if somebody designs a new style of the house, and it's within the guidelines, and they have concrete, then, yeah, you follow this recommendation to carefully choose grain, so it looks, we're talking maybe. So it looks, we're talking maybe about retaining walls at the house, right? So the retaining walls will be nice and good-looking compared to just the concrete or something else.
Ecologically, concrete is not good.
I agree with Carol. Take out that middle, six point one point eight, because you've got two other green checks, checks. You don't need that odd-looking little narrow rectangular photo.
Yeah, six point one point ten. First of all, that's not Carmel. I think we can all see that right off. Maybe if we saw the whole building, there would be more to suggest or something to it. But I just don't, I don't think that should be in here anywhere. It's very weird. On six point one point six. To elaborate on the details of the text of six point one point six, maybe there would be a photograph that would highlight more of those elements. It seems to me we've got some rafter tails here, a door, we've got a stacked stone chimney, but there might be a detail that would have more of these things. Show a little bit more natural wood, a little bit more expression of detailed wood. You know, beams that are more present as rafters. Six point one point six with the red X, great. I love that round window, six point one point seven. And I agree with getting rid of six point one point eight. And just a quick observation, when we were talking, because it didn't dawn on me until now, when we were talking about this one here, we had almost, but we did not have quite, a hundred percent difference between the steering committee and the public. Did anybody notice that? Almost a hundred percent difference. And I believe the steering committee was hired by the commission to represent the public. Okay, I'm done. Got it.
Thoughts on this page?
I just cannot believe, I had this huge question mark about six point one point six. I mean, there's got to be a better, something better than that.
On the green check to the left?
Yeah, yeah. And then six point one point eight, I mean, I, I, get rid of it. And because you've got the one below. And six point one point ten, I just think, you know, we can find a better example, can we not, of concrete? If we have to use concrete. I mean, I think that like the Seven Arts Building and there's some, there's some really nice concrete. But then there's some, most of the time, it's not, it's not that great. And I do like concrete buildings, but they have to be in the right place. They have to have the right architect. And that, for me, is a difficult thing to, you know, to do. So those are, those are my comments. And I still don't think, knowing that, that, that house out on the point, I still have a question about, you know, this and the one that's out on the point. Because...
I don't think this is on the point, but anyway.
Yeah, but then where do you think it is? What?
It's not, I think, I'm very confused. Or they flipped it somewhere. I've been looking at it, trying to figure out this picture, but it's not. It may be the picture itself was flipped.
Do you, Torres and...
It's not.
It's not the one that's one, no, two northeast and...
Then it was, maybe it was flipped or mirrored or something. Because definitely it's, it's not that way. It's very strange.
Can we just get rid of it? Okay, let's find something better.
I think it's mirrored. I got a nod in my mind.
All right, any other thoughts from Sydney? Yes.
Six point one point eight sketch, do you want to keep that or remove it?
I would remove. I mean, actually, I find it a very good sketch, but I just find the format confusing. And I think, yeah, go ahead.
This one does that, six point one point eight. Yeah, so to that point. So did I hear from the steering committee? Do you guys want to eliminate the middle picture of six point one point eight? We've got three pictures and a diagram representing six point one point eight.
We're almost, they're almost telling me now. What do you guys think? So I don't know if people recognize that the middle, one up from the bottom on the right is the... Thodos Cottage, right? Which has a concrete foundation and then this kind of...
Where, which one is that?
Oh, why do we care who did it? No, it's not about who did it, I'm just saying that if you're trying to, again, this is a general question for the steering committee. Do we want to have sometimes, maybe never, maybe sometimes, maybe in certain dance? Do we want to have different examples of the same principle? So for example, if I look at six point one point eight, the one we all like and think is a really good example of the diagram, and I say, oh, I'm supposed to put, I get it, I'm supposed to put wood over stone. But that's actually not the point.
Right.
The point is you're supposed to put light over heavy. So in order to make the point that you're putting light over heavy and not just wood over stone, sometimes, this is a question for you guys, might help to put more than one example. Now maybe we say no. It's not necessary.
But I think it's not a great example.
Yeah. So you guys, you guys tell me, is, if you think that we need variety to make a point here or we don't need variety to make a point? Or these are not the right ways to make the point?
But why do we need three?
That's a question.
We might be better served by, because we also don't have a red check mark for this one. A picture where someone has put heavier material on top of lighter material.
So maybe we want to find that instead?
Yeah, and maybe big enough so that it really accurately dramatizes, you know, that point.
So we want a six point, this is Brandon's suggestion, a six point one eight, that's a bad one to make the point with dark, with heavy over light.
Yeah.
And again, I think that there's been, now that we've put it on the table that we can use anything, it does help. This is very constrained by our prior principle, which was we're not going to embarrass anyone. So, okay, if that's, if that's out the window, then maybe we can find some other stuff. Other thoughts about this page?
Into photos from out of town versus in town, it's along the same line. These are the residential guidelines. Six point one point seven is a commercial building.
Is it?
Yeah, it's the Normandy Inn.
It's, you know, there's the dress shop, the woman's shop. And then there's the little, this little circle and the little pathway and everything, yeah.
So does that bother us, though? I don't know, I think it's a great point. The question is, this is a detailed zoom in detail. Do we care if we're just showing how stones are stacked? But I can also, we can also hunt around for a residential version.
If the, I mean, my suggestion is, thinking from this, from the functionality of it, if the goal is to make this a usable document, we find a good example of something, whether it's on a commercial building or a residential building, unless it is, unless it is showing like a residential, a commercial use. I think this is a good example.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, and maybe it's nice also, I don't know if this was my intent or anything, but just, these are two round windows, one with a wallpaper rock and one with structural rock. So that's kind of nice to have those near each other.
Yeah. But can we make a little note of something like that?
Yeah, let's, well, this is not formatted yet, really, so.
Yeah. I have a feeling we'll come back with a caption meeting where we go through pictures and argue about captions.
We may have to.
Caption of a commercial building.
All right, any other thoughts on this page, Mary Ann? What do you think about eliminating the, or just instead of having three examples of six point one point eight, maybe we just have the top one and find a no for that concept?
You're not going to keep the graphic?
No, she doesn't want the graphic. We've made a new policy of no graphic.
I know, but...
You want to keep the graphic?
I hate to eliminate Thodos' own house, that's a very good house. So I think it's just, we're looking at just a small fragment. I think it'd make the same point, maybe with a slightly different angle, encompass a little more of it.
So, yeah, more, more context?
Whether for clarification, you called the picture at the upper left, green, the green studio? Is that green and grain or?
Upper left? I don't know who that is. It's a vernacular cottage and folks on this end of the table are saying it's too, it's too basic, I think, is what they're saying.
Okay, I thought somebody used the word green.
That was earlier.
I agree that that six point one point six green check picture doesn't really convey used details that are true structural elements. I don't know where that is in that photo. So I think that's, it just doesn't really demonstrate what the point's supposed to be there. Six point one point seven, while the stone work is quite nice. I hope we can find a better picture where the, the stone is not like swooshed and swallowed by the roof, squished into the corner there. I don't think that's great detailing. And there's lots of good stone detailing in town. On one point, on six point one point eight, I think that the bottom picture, where it, a whole house picture, would be a much better demonstration of that paragraph than the first one, the top one. Because that stone base is all chopped up by different painted windows and gratuitous whatever.
Oh, you're right.
And the bottom one really has a nice solid base, is beautifully detailed. The windows are beautifully detailed, so I think that would make a very good example. And would be very similar to the graphic, actually, that we have. Well, a really good replacement.
Yeah, I think you're right, Mary Ann, that that, making the first story stone, although it's heavy under light, is not quite the same concept as making the stone do the work of the foundation.
Yeah, or it would be if it was not all chopped up. There's hardly any stone left on this thing, so.
Okay, so we're going to try to, does the rest of the steering committee agree that maybe we should look at six point one eight for the bottom one as the key example for this common?
Mm-huh.
This, rather than the top one, because this one on the bottom might be cleaner?
I also think for six point one point nine, it would help demonstrate the point if you zoomed out a little bit because you actually don't see that it has a light bottom and a heavy top.
Again, this is...
We know the reasons, yeah.
Yes, we'll see. So what about, and then what about the Thodos example? Don spoke up in favor of it because it's possibly because it's a different example of the bottom right-hand one? Or do we want to abandon that one?
I don't know that it's necessary, once you have one good, you know, very clear. What I like on the bottom one, it's just very clear, you know, in its message.
And then Thodos Cottage does appear earlier in the document already. So we're worried about somehow showing that somewhere in there. It does show up in a much more full form earlier.
And does the steering agree, may agree that the six point one point ten, we just need a better example? We have a photograph here on manufactured materials, so we have to find a good example.
On this one, you don't know what the point is because the most of what you see is the wood and fence. And so I don't, you know, you don't quite know what's going on there.
What if the angle were different and you could see the poured concrete and the concrete panels behind?
Yeah, and it's also, it's the context or composition that's important in a case like that.
So this just says, carefully plan the wood grain, the modules of formwork, or those pour concrete or use cement board siding with a smooth, un textured surface rather than add a pour wood grain. So maybe, you're right, the fence is too emphasized, so the angle, whatever this is could work if it was angled differently, maybe.
And then it has this weird plant outside, you know, it's just all... But I might be able to get to actually...
So we're going to, so we're going to choose it and try to find a better, or something like it? If that works from a different angle, then yes. If not, we will find a new one, it sounds like.
Page thirty-six.
Page thirty-six.
Four pages to go. I have no problems with anything on page thirty-six.
Okay. I do, of course. I like everything but two pictures. Six point two on the right, the big one there, we're using, once again, large glass windows instead of divided windows, or, you know, divided at least at the top. And it looks very ordinary to me, very anywhere USA, not Carmel. Six two two on the left is the one we were talking about. That's such an ugly house across from Cypress Inn. With too much detailing, so I don't know if we want to put that twice in the guidelines.
Or we can move it, yeah.
And then six two two right next to it on the right. You know, this is just food for thought. Sometimes, an inlet like that or an inset of stone is a nice thing. If you can imagine that without the stone, it would look pretty boring all the way along there. And I agree, you know, if you're going to do stone, do it all the way around, wrap it all the way around, like in six two one is, is a problem, as it indicates. But I think there are times when, especially if there's stone somewhere else on the house and we can't see that with this picture, it isn't bad. So that's my thought. The rest of them I like.
Yes, I agree with Carol. Picture six point two, which, I believe in general, all the good examples, especially in the beginning of division or like bigger paragraph, like six point two, need to represent whatever Carmelians want to see here and to keep in Carmel. And Carmel is famous for cottages. So if there will be a picture of cottage instead of this house, I believe it will be better. Picture six point two point two, the right one with the cross. I also agree, it's a little bit out of maybe context and it might work very well if there are two finishes, stone and stucco. And if the stone is with inset, so it has like natural beginning and ending points, so it might look really good. So maybe it's not a good example of a bad example. Again, I'm talking about six point two point two on the right with the stone which is between two popping out pieces of house. Yeah, maybe there is continuation of the stone behind this pop-out. Next picture, six point two point three with the green check, first one. It seems like it's burned house, maybe just the quality of picture.
It's down the end of the street here, it's actually a brick.
Maybe, maybe it needs to be retaken, that picture.
Oh, it's cut off, yeah.
You have part of the house, right?
Right, I'm talking about first one, six point two point three, which looks like it's burned shingles on the... Burned, yeah. After the fire, right, so.
It's a little...
It's authentic. Well, but maybe, maybe there is a better quality of picture which will show to appreciate this partina, right? But right now, here on this picture, it looks to me like it's, like it's, yeah, like it's almost... Yeah. Yeah, all, a lot of examples, yeah, good pictures.
Thank you. Neil, what do you think?
On point two, I want to read from the existing design guidelines, nine point one one. Divided light windows are encouraged. Divided light windows should appear to be true divided light, including use of internal and external mullion and muntin bars on insulated windows, removable or snap-on, or internal-only mullion and muntin bars are acceptable. So if we're saying right now, divided light windows are encouraged, I think we should not have so many examples of houses that don't have divided lights.
Agreed.
Okay, so that one, is the glass is too big is your comment?
Yeah, too much clear glass there.
Of the rest of the page?
And the glass railing doesn't help, I know.
So the page will... Okay, back to the steering committee.
It's six point two point two is, I think it is, I think that's universal, I remember it as the worst piece of architecture in town. And it would help to have more of that because it would particularly talk about different materials used in consistent, not in a consistent manner.
Yeah, so this is the one people were wanting to maybe put at six point one point two and three. Somewhere in there was where we were looking for, I think that was it. Was somewhere where we were all talking about the round, oh, I wrote it, no, I... Oh, five point. So we were thinking about using that photo. Yes, five point four point three, where these diagrams are. So we could still consider that, steering committee, to move that circular window since we have two examples in that spot, back to this area here where we were trying to get rid of some diagrams. So just keep that in mind, so that was five point four point three.
Yeah, remind us, let me go back.
And then, okay, so any other thoughts? Let's maybe start from the top, the two uppermost photos. There's one that shows the veneer stone on the front with, you know, again, could be a better angle, but clearly stopping and then stucco going around the back.
and then stucco going around the back. Um, the one on to the right does not do that. Um, there's a complaint about the window mullions. Um, any other thoughts about either the top two or anything that follows?
Six point two, I think my biggest problem is, is it's so antithetical to, to Carmel. I mean, it, it really does have, if you know the property.
Uh huh.
Um, it has a, a very un-Carmel kind of feel about it. First of all, there's this cypress, but there's no other vegetation around it.
Yeah, it's not very, yeah.
I mean, if this house were nestled in trees and, um, some native bushes and yada yada, it would be different.
Yeah.
But it's not. And, and these people definitely did not want it. There are no street trees in front of this place. I mean, I, I think, huh?
Are they home a lot?
They're never there. And, um, uh, it's just, I mean, it's just...
I hear you.
It's just ugly, you guys. I mean, it really is. And, um, and, and for that reason, I think it should not have, you know, it should be an F.
Not be used as a, as a, no, remember, we're building material or features used in a consistent manner, manner now. I think it's totally reasonable to say it violates other things, so we don't want to use it.
Yeah, right.
So, but remember, we're trying to find.
And we've already said that.
Okay, let's try to find, let's think about what could be a better example here.
Yes, exactly.
Anyone else on this top right-hand picture or top pictures in general?
I agree. I think that house picture shouldn't be used, it's, it's, it's...
Violates too many things.
Yeah, it's not Carmel and it's not a good piece of architecture either.
Well, I think that's what we said also. We said that at previous meetings, that, you know, we shouldn't put a picture in here that violates six things to make...
Yeah, yeah.
You're absolutely right, and it's hard.
Yeah, I think we all agree that should go.
Okay.
And then, yeah, go ahead.
And then maybe substitute a, a bad house, which six point two point two is very bad. So I think that would be, the prominence.
What about the, on the right, Dawn? So here, there's been some comments from the public that this, that the, it's okay to mix up materials if they're inset. So this is a, this is an example of a switching of materials, but in an inset, so that you stop and start the material to the left and right, but out of, in an interior corner.
I actually think that, that's, that's absolutely valid. Not, not whether I like this house or not, but as a principle, it's valid. And it does, this picture does not demonstrate the point that we should stop a material at a corner, because that's not a corner. So it, it definitely doesn't do what we want it to do for that particular paragraph. And the upper one, the six point two point one, I actually don't think that's a bad example, because they are dissolving the stone wall with that stone pillar next to it, so you could almost look at it like a leftover piece of wall, somebody built something in the back. It, they're really bad examples of that, stopping at the corner, but this is actually quite nicely done, you know, it's, uh...
I'm shocked.
With this, with this, you know.
Right now, it's just like one of those shocking things I've ever heard you say in these meetings.
I mean, it, they're, they're, they're going and dissolving the corner with the little pillow next to it.
That is extremely generous.
Yes, but we, so we, so we like, so we like stone pilasters once in a while, if they...
Well, you can see, you could...
You're against stone pillars, I'm shocked, I'm gonna faint. You're like against stone pilasters, you're against, I know, what is going on?
Well, it's, you could read it as a continuation of that wall, you know?
You could.
You could read it as such. Uh, if, it's, it's too zoomed in to actually judge that, I think. But they're good examples of how you dissolve a wall properly, you know? Um, and there's a lot of bad examples where some, where the material stops at the corner.
At the outside corner.
Hmm?
Yeah, there's a lot of worse examples.
And an outside corner. Yeah, there's a lot of worse examples that are not as nicely detailed.
That'll make me happy.
Yeah. Well, I'm still, I'm still in shock that this is accepted to Mary Ann. But, uh, Doug, any thoughts on this page?
I think six point two, the big picture demonstrates the narrative, but it looks like a big house from the prairie.
Yeah.
Um, Dawn, any thoughts?
I think you're right, that's best.
Okay. And, you know, for my part, and then six point two point four, the bottom left, that's a pretty good reason.
Yeah, I like that.
That's a good five, right?
Yeah, very, yeah.
One good five.
Yeah, yeah.
I just want to say something about these pictures.
And this is where I think, yeah, you're like up here on your analysis in a good way. Um, but I'm not sure that I trust...
Yeah, I just...
To have an example of an interior stone wallpaper...
I don't...
That then could be used to sprinkle stone around at every interior corner.
Yeah, but six point two point two says, do not stop wall materials at corners, inset.
Yeah, these are corners. These are interior corners or exterior corners?
Interior corners.
And we could say, do not stop wall materials at interior or exterior corners.
Okay, all right. So I am not personally, I, I think actually that's a quite good way of breaking up building mass, to have, you know, different materials at interior corners. So I, I would not agree with that.
You're not objecting.
No. But I really object to stopping it at exterior corners ninety-nine percent of the time. I just think that one picture is done.
We need a better picture there. But, so Melanie and I disagree a little bit. We, we don't want anybody wasting materials in random spots, not because you wouldn't do it beautifully, but because I don't think everyone would do it beautifully.
All right.
And I think the discipline, this is something we've talked about before in other principles, the discipline of saying, is it a stucco building? Is it a stone building? Is it a brick building? Is it a wood building? That is a better guideline than, it could be a mix, as long as you put it in an interior corner. I can't imagine, I think it's led to some really bad, bad architectural problems.
Maybe there's a way of saying it, that you can use different materials to distinguish different building mass.
Yeah.
You know, because I think that's actually a very good tool.
We have an example of that. We have an example of that that was very well received in a, in today, and that's on page thirty, five point one point five, with a whole building mass. So this is a very good example, breaking up the building mass.
Five point one point one.
Top of page thirty, right, upper right. It's a vernacular building that's primarily stucco, but it has a stone cottage type of building in front of it.
Yeah, but I have a different...
Yeah, it's like an addition.
It is an addition.
It is an addition.
I have a, where is that?
Page thirty.
It's, it's an original stone cottage.
Oh, this is one house?
Yeah.
Yes. And then, and then they had, did an addition on the back end.
Well, that's not what I meant.
Yeah.
Looks like the garage was in the addition too.
Yeah, exactly. I, I, I don't, I, I don't know that that's a good example, yeah.
Well, it, to me, this is less ripe, ripe for ease, certainly than what we're talking about. The page on now.
Yeah.
Thirty-six.
Thank you. Thirty-six. Is very ripe for abuse. So in the, we're in their business of design guidelines, this is where...
Let's ask it differently. Do you think that this building would be a better building if it was all stucco?
Possibly. I mean, I don't think it's probably a good building, period.
It's, it's a good building, period.
Because it's not, there's not much going on in this building. But you don't want people to use the excuse, the crutch...
Yeah.
Of switching materials as a replacement for bad architecture.
Yeah.
At bad architecture, I'm not sizing the windows properly, I'm not doing the right composition, and I can tell there's something missing, so I'll slap some stone on it. That's what I'm trying to avoid.
Yeah, irregular stone too. I mean, it's just like, you know, just throw it on there.
It's everywhere, it's rampant.
It's, it's ubiquitous in this town.
And also with these modern boxes that everybody hates. These, we let the modern box people put the different things everywhere in the patchwork.
We're electing, they're all over town.
They're all over town.
I know, because, because we've let them do it.
Dawn, how do you feel? It could be a tiebreaker.
Well, then I'd have to come down and say, I agree with Mary Ann. It's contained, that's what's important.
Okay. All right, Doug, you're now the tiebreaker.
I don't like it.
You don't like it? All right, we've been...
Good, good.
So something like that, not that picture. You guys, the majority thinks about the, the picture's okay?
Yeah, the picture's fine. That perfectly illustrates what I think is the problem.
That was a rare moment of non-consensus of the team, but we...
Page thirty-seven.
Page thirty-seven, back to the...
Uh, should I start again?
Yeah.
Um, I have no problem with anything on this page except the very bottom, three, six point three point four. It talks about skylights. There, there are no skylights, are there?
It's at the top, it's blended.
Oh.
It's the peak of the house.
Oh, up there? I hate it. I kept thinking, where's the skylight?
It's just a very, very...
Uh, I hate it.
You hate the vision?
Yes, yes. I think that we should show bulbous skylights, you know, on the front and make an X, uh, or something like that. This is, you really have to study this to figure out where the skylight is, and I don't think it's attractive.
That could be caption, Brandon. Skylight at top middle.
Yes, look closely. No, I, I just...
Get a magnet.
I don't like the house, number one. It, uh, once again, we have a, a large window there. I think that's a window, I'm not sure. Um, and, uh, and the house is larger than the under part of the house. The over part of the house is larger than the under part of the house also, which is not a good thing. Um, I, I, I think the house is not appropriate, and I think that it's a difficult find if you think the skylight is, you know, up there somewhere. That's my point. Everything else I like.
I have, I have a question about six point three, the top picture. I think this is the Frank Lloyd Wright house.
Uh huh.
But is that a statue?
Yes.
Okay, because I've been in that house.
Needs a caption.
I've been in the house and I turked out the entire grounds, and I, that's what I thought it was. But it's just kind of a little bit hard to, to tell.
Exactly.
Hard to tell what it is.
Maybe a sharper picture.
Yeah, a sharper picture, because it's a little bit blurry to me.
It is a little blurry.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And you would wonder what that was if you didn't know that.
That's right.
Yeah.
That's my only comment on the page.
Yeah, I agree. I agree with this comment.
Yeah.
Sharper photo, maybe a little from, from the distance to give more context, because it's hard to understand what, what's the point of this picture.
Uh, yeah, backing up a little bit.
Yeah, and, and...
I don't know, it's good, actually, to me.
Yeah, and the very bottom, yeah, I agree about the skylight. It's, it's not a good example of, good example of skylight, especially if, if it says in six point three point four about the dome, so do not use integrated high-profile dome. And I believe this is slightly domed. It's, uh, at the ridge, it shows like a curved top, so maybe it's not a good example.
It looks like a spacecraft staring at a gun. Okay, back to the steering committee?
Uh, wait.
I, yeah, I don't want to, I agree with everything that's been said about six point three point four, so I, I won't repeat it. And I agree with six point three there. Uh, six point three point two, green question mark, green, uh, check mark. Uh, is that a pipe going over the door there? It, it looks like pipes and wires.
Better, probably.
And, uh, and, and the right side of the door is hidden. Um, I mean, it, it's not that bad, I, I guess. I just thought I'd point that out.
That's true.
And then, uh, six point three point three, so th- that's a garage that's being made to look like a room with drapes, right?
Yes.
Which, which I think is, is kind of cool. And, and the other part of me said, well, I'm gonna drive by that and I'm gonna say, well, that's a garage. And they made it look like drapes, so it's kind of fake.
It's adorable.
It's a...
Okay, never mind. I'm gonna shut up now.
Yeah. There, there's a little guest house in there. They made the garage into like a little guest house.
It's nice, isn't it?
It's a really quaint property.
Okay, yeah.
It's really special.
I like six point three.
Steering committee, we're on, I don't know how we're done.
Okay, I think we're sort of there, we got, really two pages left.
Two pages out, okay. Thoughts about this page, everybody?
Looks good to me.
Looks good to you? Um, what about the skylight question? Do we want to keep a positive example? Do we want to just, just put a negative example? Do we want to do both?
Certainly.
Certainly this photo could be cropped. I know that we have to battle between showing things that aren't good, but also zooming in on things and, and that are good, that, you know, still, then we miss the context. This, to me, is an example of a skylight properly placed. Um, it's a pyramid-shaped roof with a glass peak. Um, it's very hard to find skylights. Well, except I've seen skylights on the ridge lines that are nice. I don't have pictures of them, but, um, that could be a way to handle this if we wanted to have a positive check mark on this page. Um, thoughts in general?
The, the house is unattractive.
Yes.
But the skylight.
Is properly placed.
It's the narrative.
Yeah, right. Um, so do we, do we, what do you guys think about not having a positive example? Or should we have a positive example for a skylight? We should have a positive example, because it is possible to do, to do...
Do you guys want a negative example too?
Yeah, that would be good.
Okay, that should be easy to find.
Yeah.
There was one right in here earlier.
Of a negative?
Now I can't find it, yeah. And it was for a positive check mark, and I stopped.
Oh, no.
We shouldn't have it because it has the broad skylight.
Oh, really?
Or I can't find it.
Well, they'll be easier to find, we'll find one.
Um, anything?
Any other comments on this one?
Anything else on this page, everybody? Sharper photo at the top.
I think there are better entrance entrances than the one with the...
The gradient, for sure.
Yeah.
Um, anything else we'd like?
I agree with everything else.
Thirty-eight.
I have to leave for another meeting, but I don't find anything wrong with the last two pages.
Oh, wow, you sure did work.
Wow.
I don't, I don't find anything wrong with that page either, page thirty-eight.
Page thirty-eight?
Must be getting tired.
Nothing wrong?
Yeah.
Yeah, I disagree with, uh, bottom right picture. I don't think it's like very bad
example. So, because the bad examples are on the next page, so if, uh, to explain my thoughts, right, if you look next page, uh, top left picture, six point three point nine, which is maybe a Dobby, house with a Dobby, uh, fence, just imagine it's a stone house, there will be stone fence, right? So it might work very well. So that example on the, uh, six point three point eight, I know it's probably pointing out to the iron, uh, elements, what, iron elements? Maybe, but it might be confusing. So it's not very bad. That's what I wanted to say. Maybe, maybe there's worse examples of that.
On, uh, six point three point eight comment there, uh, I remember Francis Whitaker doing his iron work, and then Chris picked it up from him and continued it down at the barnyard. And, uh, that kind of hand-done wrought iron, iron work never looked manufactured to me. It looked handmade. And even if it was ornate, it looked good, and it looked simple, and it looked human. So I wonder if there could be a distinction between handmade and manufactured, you know, these manufactured railings that are ornate, and they look like that they've been cut out of a sheet of steel, as opposed to something that somebody hammered by their hands.
Oh, I like that, yeah, not, uh, manufactured ornate wrought iron, yeah.
Would that be handmade wrought iron, or I don't know.
All right, any thoughts on this photo, though?
Maybe just eliminate it, and that...
Just eliminate it, yeah, that would do it.
Yeah.
Look to show it.
Thoughts about this page? We've got some diagrams here for you, Mary Ann. You might not want them, about the chimney, although...
No, I think we need one.
Maybe that does, maybe that's general enough that it could stay.
We don't seem to have as much of a problem with this as we used to.
I think that's right, but we do still have people waking up and going, oh.
That's the point, to have it here, because, you know, we've been very vigilant in the past about this, but I can, I can see it coming up again if we don't have a picture.
And the folks that have it can fix it when they come for renovations and stuff, so that's nice.
Right, exactly. Come for anything. We need to be stronger on that, you know, so...
Okay, what about the top picture? This is handcrafted, oh no.
What is this one?
This is the wrong number, by a long shot. So what is that?
Two point five, I think.
It was supposed to be six point three point five, yes, okay. Let's fix that.
Six point three, what?
Not eight. So the top one is six point three point five.
Oh, yeah, okay.
About that lovely little balcony.
That's the first house I lived in in Carmel.
Really, is it?
Yeah, I've, I've got it.
Is it nice inside?
Yes, oh, yes.
It looks lovely.
That's a caption to add.
Yeah, it's Dawn's house.
This is a big living room, isn't it?
Yes.
With a, with a lovely ceiling and, and fireplace.
Yeah, one big space.
I know.
Doug and Mary Ann, on, anything on this page, the diagrams, Mary Ann, can we keep them?
Yeah, if I'm, yeah, for, and yes, you replace them with pictures, so that's a good one. Uh, the, the left one of six point three point seven, I find a little odd with this diagonal pattern on the roof. I don't know, it, I don't know, that's a little weird.
I think they also have a skylight on the
Yeah, mm-hmm, so I think that just having one picture there probably is enough.
Yes, done by him, famous architect, famous modern architect.
Yeah.
I can't think of his name.
So famous that we can't think of his name. Same with me, I can't think of his name.
You know, it, it, it might have a purpose because of the building shape, but it just, it doesn't
Yeah, the picture doesn't make any sense, if you, if you see it
Exactly, yeah, yeah.
Again, if you zoom out on that, you would see, I, I believe that
Then you wouldn't see the shingles, probably.
The shingles would make sense with the geometry of the roof if you saw it.
But then, maybe you wouldn't see the shingles anymore when you zoom out, so I don't know, so the right one's good, so maybe that's enough. And on the fence, I think the point is not the wrought iron necessarily, it's the wrought iron on top of the stone and the mini pillars that come out of it, so I think it's a good X picture for that reason, not because the wrought iron is nice, you know?
And also, just remember on six point three point eight, we'll get to this on the next page, the details of other type, you know, getting more into fences, but handcrafted fences using unfinished grape seeds or wood pickets. So one of the things we try to do is encourage wood, because mostly, again, Mary Ann's wonderful, um, strictness on it.
As sometimes stone walls are actually good, and then just keep it a stone wall.
We'll get to that on the next page, but this is meant to show, do this, not that, you have a choice, do this, not that. And this is apparently one day But if you do this, then we go to the next page, if you do this, then we talk about how you do it. So let's go to the public on the next page, last page. Okay.
I agree with the top two, well, we aren't done yet. Uh, so, six three eleven, distinguish a gate from the adjoining fencer wall was crafted or individually, blah blah. Um, there are so many, I don't think that's bad, I think it looks kind of nice, actually, so just thinking about that. Um, and then, uh, I promised, uh, David O'Neill I would comment on the pillars, uh, which he's been fighting for a long time, he's, he's shown pictures of so many stone pillars in town, we're talking six three twelve, six three twelve, six three twelve, six three twelve, uh, four of them. Um, there are so many people use the stone pillars with the pickets in between, or wrought iron in between, and they actually look quite nice. Um, uh, I agree if the pillars are too high, uh, like on the very bottom right there, except that there is then a fence that, that kind of makes that one pillar okay, but the gate is much lower than the pillars, so I agree that's a little out of proportion. Um, and the one above it, I think, is a problem only because the pillars are so skinny. Um, and I think the one above that with the little pineapples, or whatever they are, um, it depends on what else is there, I suppose, that doesn't bother me. What does bother me is the one to the left of it where you have a flat-topped, uh, pillar that is uninteresting and fat, uh, thick, I should say, so those are my comments.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yes, engineer, I, I'm, I agree with Carol, and I think we need one example of a good stone fence. Since we crossed out stone on the left, uh, yeah, there are many, many beautiful stone fences in Carmel. Just to, to let architects know that it's acceptable and maybe even encouraged if it's nicely done.
Okay.
I think the, uh, the, the point is, it seems like we're trying to get to two or three things about the stone columns. When you got a stone column, and it's not the stone on the house, and it's like its own stone, and there's no stone anywhere else, yeah, it, it, you know, it looks like an anchor that's gonna sink the whole project, so that, that's not right. But, on the other hand, I don't mind, uh, columns going a little higher than the fence, and natural stone, if that's integrated with the stone on the building or the architecture of the house, I think can be very attractive, so I don't know how, how we want to nuance that one. Uh, six point three point eleven, is that a manufactured stamped-out gate, or is that a hand wrought? Great, I think if it were handmade, it would be
It's a vehicle gate, that's the thing there.
Much more attractive, yeah.
I think that's for the vehicle gate part of that paragraph.
Vehicle gate?
That it doesn't have its own
Do not use vehicle gates except on unusually large estate properties. Yeah, I kind of agree with that, so in that, in that regard, I think it's, it's a good photograph, I'm just looking at the detail of the fence as well. Uh, and I think that's mostly it, you guys.
I think there was a, um, an issue on San Antonio, and I'm sure you will remember this, Brandon, where people were walking in and being on their roads or something, and
Oh, yeah, yeah.
they, they wanted a, a gate across that you could see through to keep the public out. And, uh, so, that's, that may be what that is, I don't know, I mean, I, I felt sorry for them, because
Yes.
a whole lot of other houses had these, and
Yeah.
they were just trying to keep their property from being used by the public.
All right, any comments on the photos, besides what we've said so far? Uh, so let's, I just want to review for a moment the policy that we all settled on, which is, first of all, no fences, just foliage. If you have to have a fence, try the picket thing, this is Mary Ann's, if I recall. Everybody should have a wood picket fence, if they have anything at all. This is supposed to be a free-flowing forest around little tiny cottages, and that's it, period. If there's some reason, and this is in a prior chapter, if there's some reason that you need to have something more solid for privacy or pets, or whatever it is, try a hedge, that was what we had said first, try foliage. Then you can try a wood picket fence. After that, if you must have a solid thing, then make sure it's integrated to the points you guys made, integrated to the architecture. So we set it up, I thought, quite nicely as a hierarchy, so that the planning commission can say, please try to make everyone do a forest first. Then if they have to add something, be very careful about adding stuff. So, we just wanted to review that, that doesn't mean anything about how this is working out on this page. There could be better ways to make that clear on this page too, but we've made the point much earlier in the document, if you recall.
I think we need to make it again.
Mm-hmm.
Because it seems like, you know, that in the modern period, we've getting all of these, we're getting all of these people from places where they live in fear half of the time, so they've got to have big walls, they've got to have fences, they've got to have dogs, they've got to have flock cameras, they've got to have all of this stuff, because they come from a different world than what we live in, but they can't get it out of the brain, so they come here and they want to do the same thing, it's the fear factor. And so, you know, we have to be strong about what our tradition is about the forest and the integration of people.
Mary Ann's leaving, I can tell, so I just want to hear what she has to say before she goes.
I have a four o'clock
Go ahead.
Takes, I don't know, you go, go.
I'll come back to you.
No, it's very, I'm very sure, I think all of this is okay, but I do think we should have a, a good example of a stone wall. And I, I want to just also correct the record, I, I am, I think stone walls are just fine, I like stone walls. I think they need to be set back from the streets in order to have planting and foreground, you know, we talked about all of that, so I, 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 I think, yes, wood fences are, are better, but there are definitely examples on busy streets and stuff where people need a, need a stone wall.
I think we ought to go back to the narrative at a future meeting, and have a policy that delineates the hierarchy of fences.
Should we put that down too?
Yeah, we need to add that.
Because all of this just accentuates
Thank you.
fences, it doesn't accentuate forests and walls. Happy holidays, my dear.
We'll see each other one more time, right?
Maybe, and if we get through this, no?
No, okay.
The idea was, I think we're not going to, because this is the last page.
Unless we think about something else to do, Brandon, you and I
Also, we don't need to make up something to do.
No, no. Yeah, but I have a little present for you.
Uh, yeah.
Oh!
I was gonna bring him next time.
Oh, no.
But maybe we'd have to do a holiday coffee, something like that.
Right? That sounds good.
Thanks. Bye-bye, buddy, bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Okay, remaining, remaining quorum, let's talk about
If we'll define, if we'd like to put a marker on six three eleven to come back to the narrative?
What do you mean by that, Doug? Come back
When we come back and talk about them, I want to, one, I don't think we ought to allow driveway gates, and what defines a large estate?
Okay. So you want to clarify this, and I actually think that this does, it's hard to tell, it's a vehicle gate, it's a big angle, because you can't see that that's a garage.
Yeah.
Yeah, and to that point, I just, Doug, as I saw Victoria write the same note I did, I think six three eleven, when we come back, we can talk about splitting that too.
Okay.
And then what about
Six three twelve is also a vehicle gate, isn't it?
Yes.
Yeah, it is, in my way of thinking, I mean
No, no, that's not a vehicle gate.
Six three twelve
No, it's a very scary, electric gate.
Oh.
Huge, huge, very monumental.
And what do you guys think about six point three point nine, which is
What is, curious, what is that, let's try to show.
Uh, six point three point nine, integrate any garden wall with the building architecture materials using matte-finished native stone, river rock, brick, or plain textured plaster masonry, not unfinished concrete or concrete block, this is a concrete block, so retaining wall, or, or stone wall.
What are you pointing to, Mark?
Six, yes, about six point three point nine.
Oh, oh, yeah, this thing?
So we don't like, that's, that's an okay?
Except block that sort of ledgers into itself as it goes back up the
It's highway, it's highway construction block.
Cheap.
Yeah, it ain't cheap, but
Looks cheap.
Okay, so we like that one. Um, that, what about the fences, integrate an arbor, so at six point three point ten, integrate an arbor into the fence or wall design incorporating vines or other landscaping to blend it into the garden? Do you think that three, uh, point ten does that? Is that a good photo for that?
There are probably some better ones, but it works.
Six point three eleven almost does a program.
Yeah.
Six point three eleven, that's distinguish a gate, this is, so distinguish a gate from the adjoining fence or wall with that swoop.
Right.
That's not so much about the arbor.
Six point three point ten.
Yeah. I mean, it's, it's not the best.
Um, and six point three point nine, integrating the garden wall with the building architecture is a good example, the stuck, this adobe one, you like that?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, and that, again, we can back out a little bit if we want to capture Mary Ann's point of, um, of, of landscaping helping the front.
Yeah.
Um, and we all agree we want some, something good about stone.
Can you call me? Oh, sweet. Okay.
Something good about showing Thank you.
Bye-bye.
And then the signage one, six point three point, the sign, is that a decent sign?
What?
Carmel classic, this house identification device is
I think that's horrible.
Okay, what is better?
I mean, that's gonna, if, if the owner ever saw it, that's one thing that would set him off, you know?
You're telling me this sign is horrible because it's too bright, or what?
Well, it's just
It's not, I mean, it's not subordinate, it's not appropriate to the architecture.
Yeah, exactly.
Like, there's a lot of examples of where it's a finely crafted, like, car
And, and this, and this is too in-your-face.
Okay.
We don't do stuff like that.
All right, we do, but we shouldn't, okay.
Yeah.
Uh, all right, so I think I got every comment, unless there's any conclusive, concluding comments.
Three thirteen, six thirteen, what's the reference, numerical signage?
Uh, name and numbers, such as name and number signage.
Three south west, or
Yeah, okay.
But we don't have a good example of it.
Do you want, is that
Yeah, I think we need an example, so when someone doesn't say one, two, three, Fifth Street.
Do you want a number example?
Plenty of those.
Yeah.